All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting to order. It's rising, uh, say the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Now, who did you call in?
Jim Fack. Dave Shiloh. Christian Cockle.
Here.
Michael DeVito.
Here.
Beth Maria Evans.
Here.
Adam Spreitos.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Thomas present.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Seeing no changes, is there a motion to accept the agenda as proposed?
So moved.
I'm sorry.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, let's move forward to the next item on the agenda. Audience participation. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the board about anything related to the general public? There will be a second opportunity for public comment related to our further item on the agenda. Seeing nobody from the public to speak on the audience participation, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. At this point in time, I'd like to call a public hearing on the proposed application for waiver of school mandates. Anyone who's here that wishes to speak to this public hearing for application of waiver of school mandates may do so at this time?
Uh, I'm Neil Clark. I live here in town. I've sent two kids through the Sycamore School District. I have no problem with the Sycamore School District. So, I openly say that they had a wonderful experience, this then they have. I read an article, I'm not sure where it was, that the board is going to buy the Nycor building that's been sitting there for eight years. I don't know if I got all of my facts right when I got this, but, um, anyway. What it brought up was questions. It was just questions that I had. Um, I also, I was in education for 25 years. I turned in 27 years of service to the Illinois Teacher Retirement System. I'm on my pension right now, but I've seen a lot go through school boards and things such as that. And so, all I did was I just prepared some questions. You can answer them if you want. You don't have to answer them if you don't want to. But I just think that they're questions. I contacted Mr. DeVito and I said, "You know, I don't really understand this. This doesn't seem to make sense to me." But, anyway. Taxing bodies, the problem with taxing bodies is when it's not your money, you spend it pretty freely. And I don't like that system. That's the system we have. But, anyway. So, um, I'm not certain how this whole thing came up other than, "Why do we want to buy the Nycor building?" Well, let's see. Now, again, I'm not sure I got my facts right. This, it has $6.8 million worth of code violations that need to be upgraded. If we go out there, we can buy that building for $2.3 million, and we don't have any code violations, and we could move right into it. This is, if I have this property, there, you use about 10,000 square feet of space here for your administration office. That's 50,000 square feet of building out there. It's a huge building. I think I've been in it. It was quite some time ago. The layout, I think there's a big open area mall in the center. I'm not positive of that, but I think that there's a big open area mall and stuff like that. I'm not sure the utilities on this building are going to be very cheap. I don't know what the utilities are on this building. Maybe they're very expensive. But, again, it seems to me like you're buying a building that's very, very large. For what? School administration. The question I have asked, in my 27 years that I turned into the Teacher Retirement Fund, here's the question I always ask. Why is the building that the superintendent sits in, why is it a central building, a central office? And why is it away from all kids? They never see a child during the day unless they get up out of their office and they go to a school. Why is that? I don't know. I don't care. I taught in a classroom for 25 years. I had kids in front of me, 25 years. And, so, what I was saying, what I've always been saying, "Why don't they want to be next to the kids? Are they not right kids?" I, I don't really understand that. So, if the building out there is going to cost us $2.3 million, why don't you just add an office onto the high school for $2.3 million? And all of this, right here, could be moved out there. And you're right there for the teachers, for every, anybody, for parents coming. Where's the office at? It's right here. It's right here at the high, makes sense to me. I don't understand the need for a central building. What are we going to do with this building once you vacate it? I don't know. Tear it down? Whatever? I, I don't know. Like I say, I'm just asking questions here, and I think that they're valid questions. Anytime somebody says to me, "Percent savings", right away, I have red flags that go up. Um, you can, you can bounce this thing around as being a savings, this and, "Well, this is going to cost 6.8 for code violations", which I, the question I would have is, "Why weren't these code violations being fixed the last 10 years? If we have code violation, we have code violation. Let's fix them. They need to be fixed. Why weren't they being addressed the last 10 years?" I don't know. Beats me. But I'm just saying. To say that this place needs $6.8 million worth of upgrades, and that's like two, well, we're saving four million. First of all, the word savings doesn't belong in. You're not saving anything. You're still spending $2.8 billion, or a million now, million dollars. So, don't use the word savings. This is what it's going to cost. If you spend $2.3 million there, then you can't spend it on the kids, right? Because you just bought a building. You can't spend it on the kids. I have heard, I'm going to guess here, about a million times, people always say, "Well, it's for the kids. It's for the kid." This is not for the kids. This is for the administration building. It's not for the kids. We used to have donors that would give us money, and they said, "The only restriction is, it's got to be spent on something that touches the kids, actually touches the kids." And, so therefore, I would say, "Oh, let's see, 2.3 or 2.8, I don't know what the number is, million dollars. Is this going to touch the kids?" "Well, no. They're not out at the administration office." "Why do you want it all the way out there? Why do you want that building that's all the way out there?" "Well, Nycor is going to give us a good deal." "2.3 million? Is that a good deal?" "I don't know. I thought, I heard that they were going to rip it down because they don't want to get a tax done. They, they can't sell it. So is that a good deal?" "I don't know." You know? I'm just asking the question, okay? The next thing I probably would say is, um, I did hear it was going to child, it was going to house the early childhood classes. And I thought I heard Governor Pritzker say something about, "We're dedicating more money this year to early childhood education" because they want to catch that. I don't know that I heard the word "required", whether the state alone has ever required it. But, I'm just saying it. So if there's money out there, you could get it, and maybe the childhood center is going to be out there. Well, again, you know, that's just based on, first of all, if it's not required that you do this, well, then maybe we shouldn't do it. There's a lot of districts that fought over this, uh, day, uh, day-long kindergarten as well. Um, when they went to that, when a lot of school districts went to the day-long kindergarten instead of half-day kindergarten, should we even do it? Because it's not required, okay? It was based on what the taxpayers wanted. Um, if it is going to be a requirement that you put an early childhood center, and if the vote got passed that you weren't going to get this building, what were you going to do about the early childhood center? Where was it going to go? Did we have a plan for that? If that building didn't go through, if this board would have voted no? Okay? And, I, the other thing is, I mean, I'm just kind of reading this off of, um, off the website, and it says, "This, the purpose of this meeting right here is supposed to be for the proposed application to the State Board of Education to waive a mandate of the school code to allow the district to use the health, life, safety funds." So I guess if we take the money out of there, we can't use it in the health, life, safety fund because it's going out. So, what are you going to do about that money? I don't know. Again, that's up to you. I'm just asking the question. And, I did already ask this, like, "What's going to happen to this building? Are you going to level it? Are you going to take it down?" I mean, if it's going to cost $6.8 million to upgrade to, so that the code violate, obviously you can't make it into a school. It can't be an elementary building because it's, it's got these code violations. Are you being fined for these code violations right now? Is there a fine that's being imposed from us? Um, I guess that. Because if you're not, if they're just recommendations that the state's, "Well, you should get rid of that threshold, or you should do that", I mean, those are things that, you know, we don't really have to do them. Um, and so, do we add that to the cost and things such as that? That's, that's probably, that probably is the list of questions that I've had. And like I say, if you want to answer the questions, that's fine. If you don't want to answer them, that's okay. I'm a taxpayer. Everybody in town says, "We love Sycamore. Sycamore is a fantastic town. I love it. The school district's wonderful and stuff like that." But just about everybody will say, "Well, you know, the taxes are high enough. The taxes are high enough." And so now we have a school board that wants to buy a building out there for 2.8. We want a fire department that wants to put up a brand-new building for I don't know how many millions of dollars. And we have, I think I heard something about a county sales tax or something like that that's going to go up along with everything else that's going on and stuff like that. You need, when you're spending somebody else's money, it's real easy to spend. That's all I can say. It's real easy to spend it. And people get into trouble doing it, so, that's all I can say.
Would you like to submit any written material at this time for the public hearing?
Written material?
It's one of the, is there anything, would anyone like to submit any written material? No? Okay. Thank you, Neil, for those comments. Appreciate it. Um, in terms of process for public hearing, it's my understanding that the board can answer questions from the public. And I, I did take a list of your questions. Steve, direct me if I'm wrong, is it?
Can, I can also, I'd be glad to follow up and have, you know, more of a conversation about it. A lot of that was covered at a previous board meeting. There was a lot of discussion about it, but...
I did watch the video from the last board meeting, yes.
So there, but there were a couple of questions that, that you raised that, that we didn't address or weren't addressed, but I'd be glad to set up a time to talk with you to answer questions, but you can answer them out if you'd like also.
Well, I guess I'd first say, does anybody from the board have any comments to this point?
Well, one thing is, we need the building because we lost the building for our life school. So, if you care about special ed, right now, we don't have enough room. This building cannot be a school room. So, this building was here, my son went, uh, what year would it have been? He was born in 1980, a long time ago, more than 40. My son's 40 years old now, so, in, in other words, this building was not in the greatest shape when my son went to school in the district. And so, we have special ed students that need to have, uh, they need to have a, a place. You know, they need to have a structured environment. Right now, we have them in the high school because we lost our building around the time I came on the board. So that's one of the reasons we need the bigger building. And it's going to be used for more classrooms as the district grows. Our high school, we need to do more work on the high school. So therefore, we need a place to put possible classrooms in that building. And, another thing is, that building is an asset that is on quite a bit of property, so it's an asset for the district. It's a hard asset. You know that money, we don't know what's happening with our dollar right now. I'm sure you're aware of the economy. And that the BRICS nations that are buying up all the gold, well, your money, your petrodollars might not be worth anything, but that building is a hard asset. So it is in the best interest of the district to purchase the building, I believe. For that reason and many others, which Steve would be better at filling you in. Because I've been on the board a year, but I feel it was a common sense decision to purchase the building.
I would just add too, as a general comment, that, uh, the primary purpose of this public hearing is to really take in information from the public regarding the transfer of funds from life, health, safety to the purchasing fund, more or less, for the building. The decision the board made to purchase the building happened at a previous meeting, and so, is not technically on the agenda. Um, so, regard, and I guess just to kind of refocus this. Um, there's excellent points. Um, other, I don't want to cut anybody short here, but, at this point, it seems like the only real opportunity to answer some of these questions in more detail would probably be best coming from Steve because he's got some of the more specifics.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
I suppose.
Is enrollment in Sycamore School District, is it going up?
I'd be, I'd be glad to answer that too in a, in a conversation, you know, at another time. I'd be glad to phone call, set up a face-to-face meeting, whatever. And it could, I would add that to the list of questions that you've asked already.
And one more question. Can you tell me what year was the last referendum, school referendum?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'd be glad to research that and provide that answer too when we have a conversation.
Yeah, probably, yeah, probably late 2000s, before my time on the board, so. Except for North Grove or for the, the school expansion.
So I would guess over 15 years.
Like 2008, 2010, somewhere in that.
Eight or 10. Eight.
It preceded all of us on the board, so I think that's...
All of our time here.
That's the last bond referendum I can remember seeing on our bond list. Somewhere around there.
All right, um, seeing no further comments, I'll terminate the hearing, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, uh, which is going to be the approval of the resolution to, regarding the application for the waiver of school code mandates. And you guys have all, everyone should have that in the packet. At this point in time, it would be a roll call vote to approve this?
They just need a motion for it.
They just need a motion, right? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the trans, well, is there a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the application for waiver of school code mandates.
I'd second it.
All right, motion is moved and seconded.
Uh, we'll take a roll call vote now.
Discussion.
Okay, would you like discussion on this?
Sure.
Yeah, so, just to make sure I'm understanding this, this is simply to transfer funds from health, life, safety to general?
Basically that.
Or just to use health, life, safety to purchase this building?
Yeah, so, it's just to use the health, life, safety funds to do that. Um, we would use health, life, safety funds to make the repairs here. Um, school code allows you to use health, life, safety funds to, to build a new building in place of a building that needs health, life, safety repairs, or, um, to purchase a, a building. So we're, we're still using health, life, safety funds to do it, but there is language in the code that requires that the building be comparable in size. We've had many conversations with state board staff, kind of explain, um, that it's not, this is, this is an opportunity with the administrative offices, but kind of what Beth alluded to earlier, there's opportunity to move other programs in the future. They understand that. They get it. They like that idea. They, they see the logic in it. Um, but they're tied up in, in the language that's currently in the school code. So, um, the waiver is a waiver of the mandate in that comparable language that would then allow the, the school district to use the health, life, safety funds. It doesn't hold up the, the immediate purchase. Um, we can move ahead with that. We've had a conversation with the ISB staff about that. Would you transfer anything? It would just be funds coming out of the health, life, safety funds, which are set aside for, for that purpose.
So I guess when I'm, would there be anything different if this were to be voted down and we had to use a different fund for health, life, safety? Would it just sort of change the priority of projects besides the purchase of Nycor?
I don't know that it would change the priority of projects.
I'm just failing to see the advantage of this waiver instead of just using other funds.
It would, it would come out of operational funds.
Okay.
If, if we weren't allowed to use health, life, safety funds, but that was the intent from, from day one. Um, our attorneys have voiced some frustration that they understand ISB stance on the language in the school code. ISB even said they understand the use of health, life, safety funds for this, for this purpose, but the way that the law is written, um, this mandate, or this waiver is just required in order to move forward with, with using health, life, safety funds. If the waiver's not approved tonight, then it's going to have to come out of, those funds would come out of operational funds, which we, which we don't want to do. We'd rather use those funds because those are set aside for things like education and, and other uses. This is exactly what health, life, safety funds are for. We're just trying to get around this, this language in the school code, which ISB has kind of, has given us the guidance on, on how to do that.
Sure. So we just reduce the cushion in our operation funds, in our operating funds, essentially?
If, if the waiver's not approved.
If the waiver's not approved, gosh, yeah.
Um, yeah, essentially, yeah.
I just want to make sure that's clear for the board and the public.
And if we use these funds, is there going to be a deficit somewhere else for the use of those funds specifically? Or is this going to be something that would help us more with the administration building and the code violations here?
Um, say that question one more time, just to make sure.
So the funds, the health, life, safety funds, they have to be used for a specific purpose. That's what they're designed for. If we purchase the building with them, transfer that money out of the account, we're left with less money in that account. Is that going to create a deficit anywhere else for other buildings?
It doesn't create a deficit, no. It uses a portion of those funds that are set aside for health, life, safety, you know, code violations, not just here, but in any of the buildings in the district. It reduces that fund, but it doesn't create a deficit.
And then, follow-up question, the, uh, the timeframe. So if we, we apply for this waiver, how long would it take to get that approved or get that process started so that we can move in on a closing? You mentioned a closing date.
Mm-hmm.
But I was curious about if that would stall any updates on the building.
A really good question. We've asked that several times to make sure that we're clear on it. It does not hold up the closing. In fact, we're still looking at doing the closing later this, this month, in just a couple of weeks. Um, so that we can get in there and start to do the work that's going to be required to, to move administrative offices in the warehouse over there. Um, ISB has been, state board has been very clear. Um, waiting for the waiver does not hold up anything, and we can move ahead with the closing and, and moving in. The state board doesn't approve the waiver. It's actually going to be approved by, it's going to be kind of pushed on by state board staff, but it's really going to be approved by legislative leaders. Speaker of the House and Senate President, and both minority leaders. They have to look at it and sign up on it. As well as a list of all the other waivers that are submitted by schools and the state.
And if we submit a waiver, finalize the closing, and the waiver gets denied, are we left totally bagged on spending other funds?
Then we have to look at other operational funds or, or other options, but, um, ISB's been pretty clear that waivers like this are, they're not 100%. Hardly ever, based on ISB's comments, but also my experience, they're hardly ever not approved. Legislative leaders will, will ask questions, or staffers will ask questions of, of ISB staff to, to make sure that, you know, they support it as well. Um, there's always that likelihood, but we've been assured by ISB staff that that, that likelihood is very small.
Keep a motion in a second. So, we need a roll call? All right, uh, can we, a roll call vote?
Jones?
Yes.
Cockle?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Spreitos?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Bushy case.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the discussion for the county school facilities sales tax.
I didn't prepare any presentation. You guys have the, the PowerPoint that's been shared before, and it's the same, essentially the same PowerPoint that Jennifer Courier presented at the last meeting. So this really is just for any additional discussion that the board wanted to have.
And I do remember, uh, Mr. Jones, you were not present at that meeting, right? So...
I don't, we brought it up at several meetings. I don't know which one you're referring to.
The most recent one where we had the presentation. Uh, I just wanted to, I, I think the discussion we wanted to have was just a full discussion with anybody that wasn't present to make sure that any additional concerns that anybody else had could be brought forward. That was the intention of putting it on today's agenda.
Yeah.
But if anybody doesn't have anything else, I mean, a lot was said at the last meeting, a lot was said at previous meetings about it, but I just didn't know if anybody else had anything extra that they wanted to add.
Has there been any development from the other boards and the direction they're taking?
Some of the other boards have started to act. I know at least one of them, Salmonok, it's already been on their agenda. They approved it on a vote of 7, 7-0 unanimous. It's coming up on the Sandwiches Board Agenda, I think, next week. It's coming up with Calvin and Juneau Kingston's agendas. Um, Juneau Kingston, probably not until early August. They have a new superintendent. Um, so you're kind of working through that transition. Um, but he's kind of, he's familiar with it, and his previous districts had that 1% sales tax, so he's experienced of and knowledgeable about it, but he hasn't had a chance to work with the Juneau Kingston Board and have discussion about it. So that one probably won't be until early August. It's coming up on the Cal's agenda. I'm guessing I'm forgetting, I'm trying to think if I'm missing. Indian Creek has taken a neutral stance on it. I think that's it. Those are the, including us, those are the six boards that are, are going to discuss it and plan to vote on it at some point prior to middle of August.
We don't, we don't know what the Cal, if they're not trying to vote anytime soon about it?
I don't, I don't know the date of when their vote is going to take place. I know that they've had a lot of conversation about it and, and potential impact, you know, on the, um, for taxpayers, for one of them, but also, you know, potential abatement. Uh, each district has talked about the potential to, to use those, to use that revenue to possibly abate property taxes. So we need some relief there. But I, I don't have a, a sense of where the Cal is at, no.
It just has to be 51% of all the students basically represented by the school districts that vote a waiver on it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Has any communication gone out from any district that you're aware of explaining to the community or the county as a whole what this is and what the funds would be used for? And what this new gener, this new, the potential for revenue from sales tax could do in the potential to abate property taxes?
Not that, not that I'm aware of, and I think the reason is because not all districts, not all districts have voted on it yet. And it's not clear that there are enough votes or enough districts that support it to get on the ballot yet. You know, ultimately, the, the districts don't decide to implement the 1% tax. It's the voters who have the final say. So, I think everybody's kind of waiting to put anything out publicly just until it's on the ballot.
Okay.
I think the thinking is, it would be preemptive to do that unless it's sure, you know, certain to be on the ballot. But at that point, then I think it's going to be really critical to share, to share that kind of information. Yeah. And each of us would need to do it individually in our local communities, but we would all need to do it at, at county level too.
It's just my thinking that it might be valuable to get a pulse in the community before, um, the meeting on the 30th, just to see what they think, but I'm not sure if, if no one else thinks that that would be the, the best course of action. And I'm, I'm kind of that too, but that's just my thought. And that's kind of why I wanted to bring this up to see if there's any interest in doing something like that.
What do you mean, now?
In explanation to the community, what this 1% sales tax is so that before the board votes on it, they have a chance to make informed comments.
I, I don't personally see the benefit of that. They're going to get their vote. I mean, we're not voting on passing it. We're voting on putting it on the ballot for them to decide, so their vote will be in November. So I think it's probably just a lot of extra work, and you're probably not going to get the return on opinion that you are hoping for in a few weeks' time, but...
The pulse is going to come from the vote.
Yeah.
And a lot of information will be put out, just gen, just neutral information will be put out to inform the voters on what it is. I know the Chronicle's going to publish something about it, but if it, if it goes on there.
Yeah, I, I think if it goes on there.
The Chronicle already did publish something, didn't they? They put in art...
Yes, they did.
It's all work. Yeah, it's real.
Did they, they specify what's going to actually be taxed? Because that can sound really bad if people think everything they buy is going to be taxed. I, I mean, nobody likes, I agree, nobody likes their taxes increased. The last thing I want is for people's property taxes to be increased.
I, I think if it, if it's approved, again, I think there's a lot of communications that need to start going out right away. Um, it would, I don't think it's going to be clear whether or not it'll be on the ballot until probably early August. Um, so from early August to November is going to be three months. So I, I think all of the school districts would need to work together if, if it's going to be on the ballot to, again, county-wide message, but then a local message on how those funds would be spent in the school district.
And that brings up a really good point. And that brings up a really good point that I was thinking. How do we determine as a county, first of all, do we want to run it November or March? And secondly, do we want to add in the optional language for the, what was it, the mental health professionals? How do we make that decision?
Every, every district is going to make that decision individually, essentially, because every school board is going to have the opportunity to vote on it, but all of the districts need to vote on the same thing.
Yeah.
To get it on the ballot. And the first vote, like I said, is starting to take place in Salmonok, and it did include for the option to include school resource officers and mental health professionals. And to put it on the ballot in November. And again, I think the thinking is to get it on the ballot and let people have kind of their say, as you guys talked about, to where the public is at with that. But all of the resolutions need to include the same language.
So now because Sandwich had the mental health language, we have to have it, so we have the same language?
In order for it to appear on the ballot, yes. And that language just includes the option to include school resource officers and mental health professionals if it's passed. It doesn't have to be, just includes that option, because some of the districts in the county may need those resources to provide those, those staff members who are in position. I would love to have, especially mental health professionals. I don't see using those funds to do that immediately, but it would be nice to have that option, I think, moving forward.
I think, just kind of echoing Alex's question, which is, correct me if I'm wrong here, but so if Sandwich said yes to the optional language and hypothetically, we didn't want the optional language and every other board didn't want the optional language, and they also wanted spring election, would Sandwich be overruled, still be on the ballot, but it would be on in spring without the optional language?
If there were, if there were enough districts that represent 51%, the students in the county.
Okay, so that, yeah, so it's just a majority of whatever we cast.
Basically whatever Sycamore to Cal decides what.
Is what's going to happen.
Well, that's what I, have we talked with the other districts or did it sort of streamlined?
We've all talked about it, but each district has to make that decision ultimately on their own, and every district has board meetings at different dates. Not all six districts had board meetings in the same night to have that vote, and because everybody, happened at different times. I think Salmonok, Salmonok was the school board that voted on it already. They were prepared to move forward with that. So they voted first and they had, I think, the earliest board meeting, they were fully supported about it, so they moved ahead with it.
Well, it's not quite, how did they decide we want the optional language instead of?
They decided for their district. All of the districts have conversation about the value in that, and not every, I mean, there was some conversation amongst the superintendents, but Salmonok voted on what they thought was most appropriate.
Okay.
To me, in my opinion, it shouldn't, it shouldn't matter what other districts do, I don't think. It shouldn't affect what we decide. And I think even if De Calb said no, I think it would still be wise for us to host a vote and then vote in good faith of, you know, the people and students of Sycamore or so. But I get where you're coming from now, Alex, because like, yeah, like, it's formative to know, but I don't know that that information, to me, would guide, you know, I just, you know what I mean?
No, no, I was just more concerned that if we don't all vote the same resolution, if the whole thing, if it just wouldn't work.
Yeah.
But it just sounds like that's not.
It's just going to need, really, it's just going to need to be a majority of the boards have to agree on a resolution. So Sandwich having adopted whatever, like, the resolution it did, could be irrelevant if a majority of the boards sought for a different resolution, right?
I agree with that. But I guess I want to make sure that you guys know, I've not heard any other board say that they weren't in favor of including the optional language about school resource officers and mental health professionals.
I don't know why you'd make it more restrictive on yourself if you didn't have to.
Yeah, I have that mindset.
And I think that's, the thinking is, hey, if that's an option down the road, why not include that now? Because you don't get a second bite at that apple, right? Once it's approved, it's for that. So again, we could do something different, but I want to make it clear that none of the other districts have voiced an interest in pursuing that direction. Only one district has voted on it, but none of the others have voiced an interest in excluding that language.
That's what's clear to me. I mean, my general opinion on the whole thing, I think I've said before, I don't like the idea of raising taxes. I don't like the idea of paying more taxes than we have to. I don't think that once taxes get added, they get taken away ever.
Right.
I know this just pushes us somewhat in line with the rest of the state. It's not like we're suddenly the outlier 1% higher than everywhere else, but I don't like the idea of living somewhere where our tax rates in the 9% range on goods. Contrast that, though, I don't see how the state's giving us any other option. We don't have any other taxes that we can tap into or sources of funding that we can tap into to address the $100 million that they say needs to be spent on the high school and other buildings over the next 10 years. So that money has to come from somewhere, or we just wait here until the last brick falls in and we shut the school down. I don't know where the happy place is in the middle of all that. I would say from my own personal standpoint, if we go down that road, I would like to see some sort of concession somewhere else. And for me, I'll bring it back up. I'm not a fan of what the transfer tax has turned into. And so if I'm going to support a new tax being levied, I would like to see at least that one go away, just because I don't feel like it's living up to what its original intention was. That was meant to be a tax when we had new buildings going up and we couldn't afford to build the schools that were going to house those new families that were coming in. Now it's just a tax that's being levied on commercial buildings where we're then abating their property taxes down the road anyway, or we're reassessing on new buildings that are already existed, but a new family's moving in from out of town. I just don't like the idea that if there's an impact from new buildings going in on the school districts, then that should be part of the impact fee. That's what the impact fee exists for. So I know that hurts the district overall. We collect more taxes, but then we give some back, but for me, that's the only way that I can personally support going after a new tax revenue source is saying, but this one's also outdated and doesn't serve its purpose. Just wanted to share.
Well, that's what I, that's kind of my stance too. I mean, personally, I would support this with, but I'd like to see a stipulation that there's at least a certain percentage of revenue or some things calculated where property taxes are guaranteed to be abated for X amount of years or indefinitely. And I don't know if that's an option that this board could make, or a decision this board could make to direct administration to place it on the ballot, or that we support placing it on the ballot with the stipulation that there's an abatement. I don't.
I don't know how we, how would we abate though? Why would we abate? That is my question.
What do you mean?
Well, why would, if we need, the only reason I see us supporting this tax isn't to help the other school districts in the county. That's my personal opinion.
Just super fast, Eric. Yeah, could we do that?
Could do that. You could abate the property tax bill because you're generating revenue through the sales tax for facilities. So it would most likely come out of O and M, and you could drop the O and M tax levy a little bit. Right now, I would be reluctant to give the board a percentage or a flat dollar amount, but I think some commitment to abate taxes annually, I think that's doable, but the question is how much.
And yours is why, right?
Well, my question, and I guess the only real answer to that is because each district can't set a different rate that we're going to tax at. The whole county has to add a, because we can do it in quarter percent increments from zero to one, right? But then, so everybody's asking for one because, well, why wouldn't you? But we can't say, well, the Sycamore's only going to tax it a quarter percent.
Yeah.
So we have to tax it one and then can decide how much of that one to give back. But I just don't understand if we know that we need $100 million over the next 10 years to fund all the stuff and we've got no other source, and that's why we're so desperate to go out and start a new sales tax that we're then going to say, well, now that we're taxing, we're going to give a little bit of it back just so you feel a little bit better. I just don't understand the logic of that at all.
But how would you get rid of the transfer tax?
That would need to be a separate.
Either the city or the school district can just hold a vote and that transfer tax is gone, according to the legal language that we were sent.
Oh.
But they're not, the transfer tax is not at all related, it's not directly related to this motion.
And it doesn't affect the same people.
But like Alex is saying, he would want a stipulation to abate taxes, Eric's saying, right, that you would essentially want some assurance that the, you know, we all, it's like, I want this motion, but also, you know, like, that's the justification.
But would getting rid of the transfer tax produce the same result or no?
Sorry, say that again.
Would getting rid of the transfer tax, if we were going to have this one, produce the same result?
Well, if you're abating taxes, that's going to every, well, every property taxpayer. So you're actually collecting, so 50, what's the number, 56% of sales tax revenue is generated by people who don't pay a property tax? Was that the number from the presentation?
Property tax is in DeCal.
58% in DeCal County would pay a sales tax but don't pay property tax. So in a sense, if you're doing a bait, or if you're abating property taxes, you're collecting money from 58% of people who don't live here and giving some of it back to the people to do. So I somewhat get that logic.
Yeah, well, I guess I'd like to do an abatement at least until we have a comprehensive facilities plan to see where the money needs to be spent and on what, because I have yet to see, to see an annual budget for facility needs. It's just sort of a large number from the state.
I can guarantee you, Mark, a list of things that he would do right now if he had 1.5 million, whatever that's going to generate. I mean, the problem for us right now in coming up with a 10-year plan is that that plan says you have to spend 10 million next year and we don't have it, so.
Well, that's what.
You're really just waiting to see what breaks first and that's what you fix, because that's all we can do.
Well, that's what, that's what I, I'm just not understanding the need versus the wants. I mean, maybe it is really $100 of needs, it has to be done, the building's going to fall apart if you don't spend $100 million, but maybe it's really only 15 million of needs and the rest is stuff that would, you know, it's psychically pleasing, it'd be nice to have this, it'd be nice to do that. I'd like to see the breakdown before I say I'm comfortable spending all of the new revenue on facilities, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, now, maybe that plan, maybe that facilities study was before you were on the board, but it's, we aren't talking cosmetic stuff again. This is stuff that's mandated under the help life safety evaluation that has to be done every 10 years by the state, and they kind of say, here are the things that you have to fix in the next period of time. And you're right, I mean, some of them are just based on good practice, right? This needs to be done after 30 years, but if it breaks in the middle of fall session, you have to shut down half the high school, then, then what? It's not like living at home without air conditioning for a week.
Well, but I, that's unfortunate, so I don't know what's been done since then, if anything, you know, what the remaining, essentially the remaining balance of that 100 million, because we sold bonds a couple of years back for, what was it, like 15, 20 million?
Well, but the current, the current number was 90 million, right? It was 70 when we did the study three or four years ago.
Okay. But that was all life safety needs? I thought that was a combination.
No, it was a combination of life safety and recommendations, so things that were required, but also recommendations. But it was in the presentation I gave in January.
But what's, that's what I still don't, what's recommendation versus?
Things like, you know, best practice, preventive maintenance, things like that. You know that your air handlers are going to go out at some point. The manufacturers tell you that it's a lifespan of 25 years, but when they start to break down, then the question is how much money do you pour into an air handler if it's not functioning as opposed to buying a new one? A best practice is probably to replace it, but you've got to have the funds to do that. So some of the things are required per the school code and help life safety code, and our architects are certified to identify those things. They've done that, that's part of the facility audit in, what, 2019, I think, is where I got here. And some of that work was done as part of that 20 million bond that was sold, but there's still outstanding work that needs to be done. And in terms of the breakdown, what's required and what's, you know, recommended, that was in that presentation that I gave the board in January.
But recommended isn't cosmetics, it's actual, it's.
Some of it, some of it might be cosmetic in terms of instructional environment.
Yeah.
So that it's an updated educational environment, particularly at the high school. Science labs are fairly outdated. There are some parts of the science lab that don't work anymore. We've been able to repair a lot of things and keep them living along, but the science labs are decades old, so while they work and that's not a requirement, in order to provide our students the best learning environment, I guess you could call that cosmetic, but I think there's some functional aspects to those renovations too. So again, part of it's required by the state that our architects have identified, and some of those are cosmetic. Some things that we've identified, but some of those things that our architects have identified to as best practice.
Sure, I guess seeing that, like, we've talked about extensively at this point, in a report, I think would be helpful, making future decisions with what this revenue, if it passes, is used for.
Well, it's a good thing we have reports on the next, all right? We're covering all of these nice future agendas.
But that's just, that's just my thinking on that.
Yeah.
It's all in that facilities plan from 2019. I want to say it was 50 to 60 million at the high school that you wouldn't see, you wouldn't notice. It was all behind walls, opening things up. Those are $2,019, so that 50 to 60 million is 50 to 60 million. It's much greater than that.
Having just, and again, I think having the report item on the agenda, you know, looking at, okay, what information is the board getting so they make decisions, is going to be really helpful July 30th. So I think that'll be, that'll hopefully address some of those concerns. In terms of like the sales tax itself, is there any other specific items you guys think would be worthwhile discussing? We feel.
I guess Eric, would we need to add that transfer tax in order to, to take a vote?
You would be a motion.
I mean, that's what I'm trying to.
You would, as I understand.
I'm just kind of saying that in order to, in order for me to want to be motivated to support, I can't make deals here at the table, but in order for me to want to support taxing in another way, I would want to know that there's some effort by somebody, by the board, to at least discuss the transfer tax as a possible trade to.
I don't see why the transfer tax couldn't be a future agenda item.
That's what I was just.
Right. I don't, so that's, you know, to me, it seems like a good vessel for that.
Right.
We could even table it until after the referendum passes that we could vote on.
I think making sure that the public knows that that's part of the board's discussion, you know, a willingness to look at things like the transfer tax if the 1%, you know, goes on the ballot and is supported. I would, I guess I would recommend against taking a vote on it prior to that, but I think having a discussion so that the public knows that it's on the board's radar, it was discussed, there's maybe some support amongst the board about, you know, taking any sort of vote. I think that's really important so that if it goes on the ballot, let's say in November, public knows there's been some conversation about it and a willingness to look at it and potentially put it on, or put it on a future board agenda and vote to remove it. Yeah, I think that, I think that would be a good first.
Seeing no further discussion, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. All in favor?
Aye.